Almost gonna say, oh yay, oh yay. All right. Welcome to the Federal Way City Council Meeting for July 5th of 2016. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance? And Mr. Bob Woolley, if you would, lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, welcome. Great to have everybody here. So we're gonna go right into emerging issues and report by me. We've got a report by Town Square Park Grand Opening, which is this coming up Saturday, July 9th. And our Parks Director, John Hutton, has a brief report.
I have a very brief report for you. Thank you, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Burbage, and members of the City Council. We have our grand opening for our Town Square Park this Saturday. And we're choosing to ignore the weatherman. We're gonna get a better forecast in between now and Saturday. So it is gonna be a really fun event. We have two great bands. We'll have some speakers. And we'll be kicking off the brand-new spray park. Park is coming along great. We're right on schedule, right where we wanna be. Things are looking good. The playground is in great shape. The large picture you see up on the board tonight features some really cool elements. One in the background is really cool, is Mount Rainier in the view there. The columns in the middle, the stainless steel columns with the water coming out, that was the day we tested, that was on Friday. You can see the Explorer Dome in the foreground. The large area of concrete directly behind the Explorer Dome was poured today. So that area is about 95% complete and will be completed tomorrow. So we are looking good. Things are going well. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the park or the event.
All right, it starts promptly at noon on this coming Saturday, is that right?
That's correct, sir. Noon, Saturday.
Council, any questions about July 9th or park construction? I know, we've got a big crew out there working. And make sure you tell them we said thank you for all they're doing.
Absolutely.
All right, and the name of the bands again?
We have the Spasmatics and the Afro Desiacs. And the Afro Desiacs, they wear Afro wigs 'cause they play a lot of cool soul music and fun disco music. So they're a lot of fun. They're very family-friendly. They've played Red, White &amp; Blues before. They played in our Summer Sounds concerts. We like 'em because they get people up and moving. And everybody has a great time. They're really fun.
Very good, okay, thank you. A great job on the promotion about all the getting the word out about the park.
Thank you very much.
About the celebration. We're all gonna be there. Okay, now, tell us yesterday about what happened yesterday at Red, White &amp; Blues?
Oh, we had a little fun at the park. Twenty thousand of our friends and neighbors were there. We haven't got the exact totals yet, but it was a great event. And I'm gonna run through a quick summary of some of the things that happened there. So I'm gonna show you some photos as well. So the day started off long before Red, White &amp; Blues with our Miles from ESO run. And just got some great news. We have now raised, in the four years that we've done this event, over $100,000 for Miles from ESO. It's pretty amazing. We had over 250 runners this year, over 50 walk-ups on the day of. So the day started very early for our staff, 5:30 in the morning. Craig Feldman and others were out setting up cones and traffic control along with our police department. So it's a big day long before the 10 o'clock fireworks start. So that was a great event. Everybody had a great time. The mayor was there, several council members were there. Thank you very much for your attendance and support. Getting into the Red, White &amp; Blues, attendance was very good. I don't have the exact numbers yet. Our best guesses are certainly in excess of 20,000. Many people seem to think it was actually higher attendance last night than it was even in the previous years where we've had 23,000. So our vendors reported that they all had good nights. I talked to almost all of the vendors, and they reported that they had good nights. Our kids' activities were well-attended and very popular. Face painting was the biggest hit, obviously, and it always is. Our power jump and paintball were very popular. The Arts Commission tent was really fun. Had good attendance in there, and our arts commissioners did a super job. Our Parks Commissioners were also there manning a booth, answering questions about all of our parks throughout the system and answering a lot of questions about Town Square Park. I believe that the community booths and the political booths did well and had a good turnout for people talking to 'em. The bands were great, and they were really at their best last night. They seemed to be in the groove, if you will. We started off with a brand-new band to us that kind of fell into our laps. They were called Lobo Del Mar. And they kind of took you around the world in 80 days. They had their hour-and-a-half set. They started off with Scottish Highland music, moved into Irish traditional music. This was all with traditional dances to go with that. They were a 25-person family. They ended up taking you around the globe with... They went from Scotland and Ireland to, of course, Mexico. That's always the natural next stop, playing mariachi music. And then they moved into the very predictable Hebrew classics. They were great and finished up with, why wouldn't it be, Hawaiian hula music. And they nailed every one of their songs, had everybody up. I talked with Councilmember Copang there last night, and he said it was amazing. So they were great. So we were really happy with that. And after the crowd recovered from the jet lag induced by our first band, we moved into the Joe Slick Band. They did a great job in young country. They were really fun. Had several people come up and say, wow, that was really a fun band. Then we got into our classic Disco Balls, and they just lit it up. They were on fire. I saw several people talking to 'em after their set. Several people were up taking pictures with them. They were really fun. They'd get everybody up and moving. And they had everybody ready for our headliner. Our second year in a row, we had Spike and the Impalers. And they were terrific last year. And I thought they really couldn't have done much better. And they were tremendous last night. They just blew the place away. They had a classic rock set for the ages. They had all the classic bands you would want, including my favorite, Bruce Springsteen, Chicago Guns N' Roses, Janis Joplin, AC/DC, and The Who, among others. They were great. They did the Doors, and they just nailed every one of their songs. They were great. So, and then the real fun started. The fireworks and soundtrack were synced about as perfectly as they could be. Our pyrotechnic guy who was there last night, Sean, who's been there for everyone but one of the shows at Celebration Park and has been doing this for 30 years, said it was the cleanest show he's ever fired in his professional career. Nothing but oohs and ahs out of the crowd. Everything was synced up perfect to the music. The soundtrack was excellent, picked by our own very mayor. And it was really, really fun. So I think people had a great time. We had good attendance. We had great support from police and fire. Almost the entire management team was out there last night. The entire City Council. We had great representation from our electeds. And the crowds were in a great mood and had a fun time. So happy to answer any questions about last night's event that you may have. And I'll run through a few slides if you're thinking of any questions. We had our kids' parade. There's a few of our key staff members, Cody Geddes, Kevin Hutchinson, and Beau Doo, leading off with the kids' parade. That was Susan Honda's idea, Councilmember Honda, thank you very much. It was a lot of fun. We've been doing that now for three years, and it's gone really well. It's very much looked forward to. So some kids in the kids' parade. This is the Joe Slick Band, the country band. They were a lot of fun. This is Disco Balls. That'll give you an idea of some of the costumes that they were in. That is Spike and the Impalers. And the guy in the middle is Spike O'Neill. He's pretty famous in the area. The guy to his right is Lynn Sorenson, founding member of the original Bad Company, multi-platinum artist. They're fantastic, very, very good band. This was just some crowd shots that we took throughout. This is the power jump attraction, lots of fun. There's another crowd shot. These are obviously early in the day. These crowds were four and five times this big a little later in the evening, as you can see. This is a cool shot. This is about an hour before fireworks at 10:15. Another crowd shot. And there's the mayor inspecting the fireworks. This is Sean, the guy that the mayor's talking to there. He is our pyro guy. He does a great job. They love shooting this particular park because it's a really fun environment for them. It's very safe for them. And they enjoy it quite a bit. So the mayor inspected everything, and that was the result of that inspection. Came out fantastic. The show was really terrific. So couldn't be happier with the fireworks, couldn't be happier with the music. Our sound guy just knocked it out of the park. He told me he had $160,000 worth of sound equipment there last evening. He showed up at 9:30 in the morning with a crew of about 30 to give you an idea of what it takes to produce that kind of sound for that kind of show, so.
And that's Black Dog Sound, right?
Black Dog Sound, yes. He's a local guy, and he's absolutely terrific. He does all of our Summer Sounds. And he'll be there this coming weekend at Town Square Park for a grand opening.
Well, one of the things that I've really appreciated, John, since we've talked and we're doing this now, you know, over the years, we get better every year. But I really like how Black Dog Sound had gotten the speakers out, projected toward the folks that are not just in the bowl, but are, you know, are further away from the audience, that are out in the parking lot and out on the soccer fields. And that way, everybody can really enjoy it. There was a time, even just a couple of years ago, where if you were speaking at the stage, the people even, you know, back behind the tent where the eating area is couldn't hear what was going on on the stage. And, you know, that has really been addressed, and so that's great. I think that's a lot of that line-of-sight speaker system and what Black Dog does for us.
I agree, it was very fun. The fireworks guys were saying how cool it was to hear... Because they're always behind the stage, they don't really get to hear the bands. And now, they heard every band. They said, wow, I know what you're talking about now. Those bands are really good. So they got to hear it perfectly, so.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, anything else about that, you guys? Okay, great. Please make sure, and we'll also make sure, to thank all of your staff. There was just a tremendous amount of city workers there who just prepared the scene. This is all on top of, we've got the parks' workers building that park and helping to construct that park. And they had to go off of that to be able to, you know, do the tent and the stage and prepare everything for that. So really make sure that you let them know how much we appreciate all their effort.
Thank you very much.
All right, great event.
Thank you.
All right, now we've got a fireworks enforcement report by Chief Wong.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Burbage, members of the council. I am very pleased to report that there were no significant firework-related injuries or fires during this 4th of July holiday period. Checked in with the... yeah, thank you. I checked in with South King Fire and Rescue. And for a 10-day period, June 25th through July 5th, they only had two fireworks-related calls. They reported absolutely no injury in our community. Considering some house fires in our region and the significant injuries that some of our regional citizens encountered, I think we're very fortunate as a community. And we also had a similar experience within the police department. Our numbers are significantly down from last year. The first set of numbers that you're looking at here are total calls for service from period of June 27th to July 5th. And because the council meeting is following the 4th of July holiday, we counted until noon today. So if you look at last year, 2015, we're at 2,428 total calls for service. This year, during that same period, 2,067. When you look at the firework complaints just during that period, 270 firework-related calls for service in 2015 and 215 this year during the same period. Just on the 4th of July, we had last year 421 total calls for service. That's in a 24-hour period. This year, 339 total calls for service. Typically, as a city, we average about 170 911 calls a day to the police department. So you can see that on July 4th, it clearly is one of our busiest day. And we have a significant number of staff working on that particular yesterday. And then July 4th, just firework-related calls, 148 in 2015. And in 2016, we had... this year, we had 110 calls yesterday. So we're down from last year. And then far as enforcement, in 2014, we issued 17 civil infractions. 2015, we issued 52. And in 2016, yesterday, we... or I should say, this year, during this June 27th-July 5th period, we issued 49. And the asterisk is there because the statistics from graveyard shift officers are not encompassed in this total 49. So we expect this number to go up. So they'll submit their reports tonight when they come back to work, and that number will go up.
And Chief, can you then email that to myself and the council?
Yes, City Clerk has the PowerPoint, so she could... oh, the total number.
Yeah, when that gets amended.
Absolutely, Mayor, I'll do that.
Great, thank you, just so we know, as a bookmark.
That's the end of my presentation. If you have questions.
Council, any questions? Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you. Just curious why more charges this year despite the lower calls for service? Is that... go ahead.
Oh.
Yeah, sorry.
We had our enforcement teams out. So I think that there'll always be a variance depending on where the officers are at the time. Maybe depending on other calls for service, maybe they might get tied up. But we did have enforcement teams out for several days issuing tickets. So I think it's a... you know, there's so many variables. But every year, we try to do the education prevention piece and also enforcement portion of it as well.
Okay, thank you.
Council, thank you. Council, any other questions? All right, thank you, Chief, appreciate it. Just a couple of other things that are not listed here. We had the grand opening for the ribbon-cutting for Cafe Rio last week. Really fun. And a lot of our... a lot of the council members, many of the council members were there. And the Chamber of Commerce was there for the ribbon-cutting. And really, a big crowd there. It's just absolutely beautiful. It's literally right in front of the flagpole, right there on 320th. And so it was great turnout. We think they're gonna be a great addition to our community. Also, yesterday, along with several members of the council, I was there at the 61st Annual North Lake Parade. It's been going on over 60 years, which was really fun. And I got to ride in the car and wave, and Councilmember Honda walked the whole way, exactly. So it was great. It was a great time. And thanks to Susan's prompting, I actually got extra candy. So I didn't run out this year. There's nothing worse than running out of candy early. So it was just one of those great 4th of July. That is really a beautiful area back there that has sort of escaped time, if you will. It's like being in a little small town right adjacent to us. And it really was fun to be part of that, see all the little kids lining the street. So anyway, that's my report. It was a great 4th of July day. It was a busy day. The Miles from ESO event was great. John, please tell your folks over at the community center thank you so much for all they did. And it was great to see that many people. And they put on an event even before that, for the breakfast that people went to afterward. So there's so much great work being done by our city staff. We appreciate it. Okay, now, on to citizen comment. I've got two pink sheets. If anybody else would like to comment, please make sure you fill one of those out. We've got Arnold Ellingson. And then after that, Mr. Bob Woolley. Evening, Arnold.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Arnold Ellingson. I live at 3383742nd Avenue South. And my phone number is 206-730-1126. On March 20th, I decided to develop four pieces of property on 376 and Milton Road. At 33 acres, I talked with Becky Chapman, and she gave me all the paperwork to fill out. Leave 25 each acre. I counted the trees and marked the 86. She wanted me to ask... she asked me to. I waited seven weeks with no permission. After two months, she told me Federal Way had no ordinance to remove trees. She turned the paperwork over to Isaac. He told me he'd have an answer in a week. I went back eight days. He said two more days. Three days later, he told me he had no ordinance to cut the trees, and he was turning it over to the city attorneys. The city attorneys had the paperwork two weeks, and the outcome was a call from Isaac stating that I could take those trees down. At that point, Isaac told me he was leaving the city. Three months, I backed square one. I already have the paperwork approved by the Department of Natural Resources. Maybe if the city doesn't have an ordinance, they should accept the one from the DNR. I can't believe a city of this size doesn't have an ordinance to remove trees. And denying it is the same to me as saying you have it, but you don't have it. If you don't have it, I don't know how you could deny it. So I don't know. It's let the big developers take trees down, but a private person can't. It's only eight truckloads of trees. And the Manke lumber crewed it, and they'll be doing the job. And they said they would not use a skidder, they'd use a shovel. And they tried to leave it looking nice. And I have no intentions of taking any stumps out. Thank you. Any questions?
Actually, what I'm gonna do... Thank you very much, Mr. Ellingson, for coming tonight. What I'm gonna do is our interim CD Director, Scott Sprout, is here. Sprout is here. And I'll ask him to meet with you right now. Get, you know, this is the first I've heard of this. So get some rudimentary detail from you to the point where he and myself, and perhaps even my chief of staff and legal counsel could follow up. So thank you for bringing this to our attention. I think it's very helpful. All right, Scott?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and meet him outside here, and we'll go and get his information. And I'll get a chance to look into staff tomorrow, too, so.
Thank you very much, Scott.
Follow up with a report tomorrow for you on that.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. And Mr. Ellingson, what we're gonna do is we're gonna treat this for community concerns, just so you know. We have what's referred to as cars. They're citizen action requests. So by nature of your comment today, we'll enter this into our system to make sure that there's not a delayed response. And to make sure that... so we track those individually to get... they get numbers. We talk about them at management team meetings on Monday mornings. So Scott, your man back there, and he'll help you, and we'll get right back to you. Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Okay, now we've got Mr. Bob Woolley, sir. And Bob, we all received... everyone here received your letters and email that you sent to the deputy mayor over the weekend. And up at the dais, we have the letter that you provided to the city, just so you know.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, that letter was written because of the comments that were made by the chief of staff. And I couldn't make those, so I provided it to you in the hard copy.
Great, thank you.
That says sincere communication.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Farrell, deputy mayor and the council. I made a pause for 20 seconds. Tonight marks the 20th week that Lake Gene has been before the city council without any real action taken by the city council. I have my Federal Way hat on. I had it on yesterday. I had it on two weeks ago. The residents on Lake Gene still have positive expectations from the city council. We are waiting for some indication of what action is gonna be taken by the city council. The club has begun to irrigate their golf course. And as a result, they are discharging water out of their well into Lake Gene. The club's perspective is that their well water does not contribute to the toxicity of Lake Gene. We took a sample, offered it to the city. The city did not want to accept the sample, so we took it to Spectrum Labs for having it certified testing. The preliminary result is that the Lake Gene discharge from the club's well is twice as high in total phosphorus than the upper waters of Joe's Creek. Again, a factor that the club chooses to ignore. Lake Gene has not turned toxic at the 6.0 parts-per-billion level because of the cool weather and the rain. And it did not turn toxic last year until mid-July. Our expectations are that we will have toxicity sometime in July. Don Smith and I went to the blue... the red, white, and blue shindig last night. And on the way home, we drove by the number 11 green, and there were three teenage girls playing in the irrigation spray. They weren't supposed to be there, but they were having a good time. And it was observed, the club has not had any action in regards to warning the Fairway residents of the toxicity. The HOA has, but the club has not taken any action. The tax advisor called me today and said they had completed their investigation, and they were in the process of issuing a letter. They are giving us credit for 2014, 2015, and 2016, and projected into 2017 until Lake Gene's toxic conditions are remedied. That ought to be instructive to the city council. That is a government agency that had a copy of the litigation and other documentation. Again, it should be instructive that the city council can act on our request. In the Saturday paper, Seattle Times, there's an article about St. Lucy, Florida, and the problems that they are having with blue-green algae. This is the first article I've seen this year. There will be more articles, undoubtedly, in our local papers about the blue-green algae phenomenon as it exists in the Puget Sound. Mayor Farrell, you mentioned the communication that we made. The plea in that communication was let us hear what the city council is going to do. We are not asking the city administration. We're not asking legal. And we're not asking the chief of staff what is in store. We're asking what is gonna occur from the city council. In 2014, deputy mayor, you came to Lake Gene's National Night Out, and we had a good visit amongst us. Last year, Mr. Mayor, you came. We are inviting Mr. Brian Wilson to come this year. He requested to meet with the residents to give his perspective. And we are specifically inviting him to come. And we're having our annual meeting of the residents. And it's a dynamic meeting, but he can be the keynote speaker based on what Mary Jo Rasmuth asked last committee meeting. National Night Out is a very important thing. And it has helped us gel our collective insistence of something being done for Lake Gene. It's a very good thing. It's a very good thing. We've invited several of the council members to the cul-de-sac. All of you are invited to come to the cul-de-sac, because the expectation is on 2 August, we will have toxic conditions on Lake Gene. Thank you for allowing me to run over. This might be close to the last time, but I'm not going to make a promise again. I have a spare pink sheet here to take home with me.
Very good. Well, thank you, Bob. I'll be there. And I do recall getting something served to me that was green when I, to drink when I was there, trusting that didn't come from the lake.
Wait one. There's a belated pink slip.
Oh, that's right. Don Smith.
I have one to follow.
All right. Thank you very much. Don Smith.
Sorry about that. I don't know why those things happen. Somebody take this out of the room, please. I have no idea what caused that. Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council, staff, and honored guests. Yes, I will not disappoint you again at National Night Out. I've come to give you a preview of what you're in store for.
That's what I'm saying.
As the mayor remember, last year, I devised a concoction, a martini. I like making martinis. And the one I created is called the Lake Gene Blue-Green Algae Tini. And we took challenges at the National Night Out for anybody to toast to Lake Gene and our health, and we all downed these shot glasses. At the end of the night, I had no idea that I had 17 shot glasses, but that's how many there were at the bottom of the sink by the ending of the evening. We all had a good time. We enjoyed the visits of the police, the fire over the last three years, and also the Mayor and City Council people. And yes, we do invite you to come, partake with us. It's an event that I look forward to every single year, because I think it's the only time that communities sometimes come together. You have to have an excuse sometimes to bring communities together. And there's something like breaking bread, or breaking hot dogs, or sipping a blue-green algetini that brings people together that don't associate the rest of the time. And yes, we did have a cause. It was to bring the community together, to get us talking, but it was also to bring visibility about our lake and to look for solutions. And we asked the City Council, we asked the country club, we've asked every governmental agency in the state of Washington to help us out in our plight, to find a better way to manage Lake Gene. We want it to be a better, cleaner, healthier lake. We've even offered to pay for it. We're not allowed to do that because we don't have the permit. We do not own the lake. Everybody keeps pointing to the city as the lower court jurisdiction. That's why we've asked you to step in, to help us out, to get through this impasse, so that we can, as we make a new day for Fedaway, that this lake can be clean. Yesterday before, as that blue-green, red, white, and blue came out yesterday, we circled around in Bob's airplane and looked at all the lakes in Fedaway. Ours was the only one that was just neon green from the sky. It was that obvious. So please come out to our lake at the end of 40th Court Southwest and enjoy us and our National Night Out. And yes, we will toast all together, Lake Gene, to your health.
All right. Thank you very much. And just for the record, I only had one of those, not the 16 more.
You just had one.
That's right. All right. Make sure the record's clear.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Deanie.
I just want to make a comment. Thank you very much. And I have a house out in Ocean Shores on Duck Lake, and we had the same problem with algae in that lake. It was so bad that if you took your motorboat out, your propeller would get wrapped up in the weed and cause your boat to stall. And the citizens there went to City Hall and worked with the city, and they put things in the water that didn't harm the fish, didn't harm the wildlife, the ducks, the deer, anything like that, but it killed the algae.
Right.
And I love, you know, I take a kayak out now. I wouldn't have been able to kayak before. My paddle would have gotten stuck in all of this stuff. The weed is gone, and it has to be, you have to continue to do it for a while, but it's clear as a bell. And I really, really can understand what you folks are looking at and facing over there, because it was a pretty sick lake for quite a while.
Can I add one thing for 30 seconds?
Of course.
Is, this has been called by many areas, this is a private matter, not a public matter. And yesterday underscored, when we came back from the park last night, and we saw those three kids running through the sprinklers for the fun of it, they don't know where that water's coming from. That water's coming from Lake Gene. It's not toxic yet, but when it does get toxic, are they going to go down to the lake and see the caution signs? No idea. Kids only need a motivation and an opportunity, and they're going to take advantage of it. Just today, I noticed two teenagers that were canoeing on the lake, putting their hands in water that was bright green, but kids don't worry about that. They just go out and play with it. So it's not just a private matter. When you've got people from the public that come through and play and run through the sprinklers, it's no longer a private matter. It is a community matter.
Well, I can attest to that, too, because when, before they had treated the lake, I was in my kayak, and when I was coming up to land, I flipped out of it, and I got one heck of an eye infection.
I would not go swimming in that lake. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to call in Councilmember Maloney in just a moment, but I just do want to tell you that we're going to, in response to your letters, I have, and your comments, we are going to take, I'll sit down with legal counsel tomorrow and take a fresh look at this. I know that you're wanting to look at an ordinance and something like that. We need to make sure there's not unintended consequence, and certainly not an inordinate cost to the city with other lakes and kind of setting that up. But we'll take another look at it. Councilmember Maloney?
Thank you. Well, I was going to ask for clarification on some of these, but you're going to go through that.
I am, yeah.
I just want to also thank the gentlemen for coming in, and Bob especially, for continuing to come in. And I know there's two sides to this, but I appreciate having the opportunity to address it. So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we were really, you know, Don and Bob, I want to let you know that we were really looking forward to, if, we were hoping that the two sides would be able to work that out and get the treatment, and we were very much encouraging, you know, those steps to be taken. There were just a number of sort of back and forth between the owners and the club, and then the litigation began. And for obviously, you know, we had every intention and desire to resolve this short of private litigation. But I think, you know, prior to taking a look at any ordinance, we need to make sure that, you know, when we pass an ordinance, it can't just be about Lake Gene. If we pass an ordinance, it has to be applicable to all the lakes owned by the city, owned by, owned by private parties, and we need to really be very careful about how we proceed, that the law of unintended consequences and the cost that may accrue to the city, private organizations, you know, people who own. So there's things we need to work out. So we'll take another, we'll take a fresh look at it, okay? All right. Well, thank you very much. And then, so Brian and Amy Jo, let's make sure we talk about that tomorrow and address that moving forward. All right. That's the only pink sheet I have. Anybody else would like to speak? All right. Seeing none, thank you.
Did you, sir?
Oh, sir, come on up. We'll fill out a, have you fill out a pink sheet later.
Thank you very much. My name is Reverend Tyson Haywood, and I live here now in Fedaway, and it is an honor to be here and to have this opportunity to speak in front of you. Thank you very much. I just wanted to say, to, just to say, thank God. I just wanted to thank the mayor. I had the opportunity to speak with him twice, and I just wanted to take this time just to let you know that I just, well, I'm kind of nervous right now. I'm kind of nervous right now. But I just wanted to take this opportunity just to say, I really think that I have this time to, oh, wow.
Well, Reverend, you're a recent transplant from Chicago, right?
Correct. Yes, I am.
Yeah. And you're thinking about getting in the ministry here and starting a radio show?
Yes, I am. I'm hoping to have it done within maybe three to four months from now. And within the radio also, too, I'm starting the Gospel Fest also. Started that in Illinois. And from that point, I had went to, also, I, I'm a traveling minister also, too. I went around the United States doing ministry work, that type of thing. So we're planning to do the same thing here. So, but anyway, basically, I just wanted to say thank the mayor, and I thank you for this opportunity, and I'll be praying for everybody.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Reverend.
Take it.
What the good Reverend and I have in common is, he, a few months before I did, he had complete knee replacement surgery as well. So he's walking really well and was giving me some tips before I took that plunge as well. So thank you, Reverend, for coming tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Now, moving on to council business, excuse me, consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda. These items have gone through committee and can be passed with one vote. I'll go ahead and read the items. We'll see if any council members would like any individual item to be pulled for separate consideration. Item A, the minutes for the June 21st, 2016, special and regular meetings. June 22nd, special meeting. The monthly financial report, May 2016, and the vouchers, May 2016. Council, any item that the council would wish to have pulled? All right. Hearing none. Deputy Mayor Burbidge, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move approval of items A through C on the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved in second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. Unanimously. Item six, council business. Community Center Pool Filter Media Replacement Project. First, we've got a staff report from Craig Feldman, Aquatics Coordinator. Welcome, Craig.
Thank you, Reverend Farrell, Deputy Mayor Burbidge, council members. The filter media, which is what allows us to keep swimming pools clean at the Fedaway Community Center without any blue algae, sorry, it was a joke, has reached the end of its lifespan. We were seeing some shortening of our actual ability to filter the pool, the runs before we had to clean it. And in 2014, we worked this into the 2015-16 budget. There was a certain amount of money that was allocated for this, and we re-quoted it again in 2016 to make sure we were within the budget, and presented that potential contract to FedRAC last week. The members of FedRAC had questions about the type of filter media that we were going to use, and they instructed staff to research the additional cost to go to a better filter media, which is out there. It is more expensive. It is, you have a spreadsheet in front of you about the quotes that have the differences between price, basically amounts to about $2,800. This is a really exciting time. The members of FedRAC recognize the quality of this new product, and I want to thank Councilmember Honda, who brought this to FedRAC's attention. This product, as I said, is more expensive, but it is more environmentally friendly. It is basically made out of recycled glass, and it is, filters just as well as the material that we were going to use, which was sand. The differences between it, besides the additional cost, of course, is the fact that it, once it reaches the end of its lifespan, it can be recycled again. It can become bottles. It can become something else. The sand, when it's removed from the filters, actually is toxic waste. It must be disposed of in that fashion, and we're talking about seven tons of material. The other nice thing about this product is it's totally inert, and so it actually cleans better. And because it does clean better, we use less water and less heated-treated chemicals to re-induce the new water back into the swimming pools. So it is a win-win for everybody concerned, but the only catch, of course, is the fact that it is slightly more expensive. That's the end of my report. If you have any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
Councilmember Honda?
Thank you. Thanks for looking into this for us. So you have the two quotes, and one is quite different than the other.
The quote from Aquatic Specialty Services, they do a different type of product. It's actually layered glass and has different densities of glass. It's, at this point in time, experimental. They're the only ones that are doing it, and it is the only product that they are actually doing. And they're selling it as the only thing that they will use. As an experimental product, I'm not willing to stick my life out on that one, because I'm the one that has to maintain the pools and the quality of it and have to answer to the Health Department.
So we talked about, about the cost difference at FedRAC, and it didn't seem like it should be a barrier to using this other product. But we did talk about a potential problem with the timing, because this is going to be done in September when the pool is done for maintenance. Is that still an issue?
With the hope that council will approve this additional cost, we will have no problem. I've already discussed it with the vendor that gave us the lowest quote. They can meet our timeline as long as we have it ready to go at the beginning of August.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Great. Thank you. Council, any other question? Oh, Deputy Mayor Burbidge and Councilmember Moore.
Thank you. As I recall from the committee meeting, you had also mentioned that the, using the glass would place less stress on pool components?
As I told the members at FedRAC, I do two things well. I eat and I talk. So if you want to put a quarter in, I can tell you all about pools. But I'll give you the short answer on this one. At the bottom of the filter tanks are the little finger-like PVC pipes that actually pull the water back into the pool. Because the glass is much lighter, it's 20% lighter than sand, it puts less stress on that material, and so they're less likely to crack. And the only way to know if they've cracked is to pull all the material out. And so when and if they do crack, it actually causes the material to go back into the swimming pool, and we have to vacuum it out, and it shortens the life of the filters themselves.
Thank you.
All right. Council, any other questions? Councilmember Copeng?
What is the life cycle difference between the sand media and the glass media?
The sand that we have in the pool right now has lasted 10 years. It was put in and started up in December of 2006, so it is getting really close to the end of its lifespan. Before I started work with the City of Fedaway, I was one of the managers at the King County Aquatic Center. And we took one of the first facilities of this type to put this type of material into our filters, and it was very successful, and they just recently had to replace it, and it got a 15-year lifespan.
Thank you, Craig. Anyone else? Councilmember DuKlo?
You want the motion?
Please.
Before I make the motion, I do want to state that everybody on the committee was concerned about this, and we all supported changing this, even though it was going to cost a little bit more money. We thought it was worth spending the money now and not later when something else might happen. So I'm glad to see that this is coming forth. And so with that said, I will move approval of an agreement with Orca Pacific in the amount not to exceed $25,339.88 to replace the pool filter media with glass and authorize the mayor to execute the set agreement.
Second.
Motion, a second. Councilmember Moore?
No.
Oh, okay.
Second to motion.
Sorry. You guys turned on your speakers to vote. Sorry. All right. There's been a motion, a second. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Matter passes unanimously. All right.
Thank you.
Item B, Diversity Commission Appointments. Councilmember Copeng?
I would like to make a motion to, for the following appointments to the Diversity Commission with terms expiring May 31st, 2019. Trinise Rogers, Randall Smith, William Yee, and Hiroshi Eto.
Second.
But a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Matter passes unanimously. Items C, reschedule of August 2nd, 2000 City Council Meeting to August 9th, 2016. Deputy Mayor Burbidge.
I move to suspend Council Rule 2.11 for the purpose of rescheduling the August 2nd, 2016, regular City Council Meeting to August 9th, 2016. Second. No.
All right. There's been a motion, a second. Deputy Mayor Burbidge, would you explain what the basis of that is?
Yes. We, we have been holding National Night Out for some years now, and it occurs the same night normally as our first council meeting in August. And in order to accommodate council members attending the National Night Out events, we are rescheduling the meeting to to the second Tuesday meeting in August.
All right. Counselors, any further discussion? All those in favor of rescheduling our first meeting in August, first and only meeting in August likely, from August 2nd to August 9th?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passes unanimously. Item D, cancellation of August 16th, 2016 city council meeting, which is, which is normally the, which would be the second meeting in August. Deputy Mayor Burbidge?
I move to suspend council rule 2.11 for the purpose of canceling the August 16th, 2016 regular city council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and Deputy Mayor, would you maybe talk about the history of this, please?
Sure. Even, for an even longer period of time, we have been not holding the second August meeting in order to accommodate council members and others' vacations.
Okay, great. All right, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matter passes unanimously. Counsel reports. Councilmember Sepa Dawson?
I don't have much to report, except tonight we had the commission interviews with the diversity commission. I was really impressed. It's, I think it's our first interview for returned commission members, and I think that interview was really great because it gave us a perspective of what, how they're doing, and, you know, them sharing with us about being on the commission. And so I was really pleased to hear their input and also their foresight in terms of how they see the commission moving forward. And so it was the best commission interview I think I've had since I've been on the, on the council, and I'm, I really am happy, and I really liked the process, so I just wanted to say that. They were great.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Maloney?
Thank you. No, no report tonight.
All right, great. Councilmember Hondo?
Thank you. I'd like to once again talk about the 60th Annual Salmon Bake that the Quonis Club puts on, July 22nd, at Steel Lake Park, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. Tickets are on sale now, and we would love to see you there. It's, this is our 60th year. And I'd also like to thank Amy Jo for all of her help, as I've been a council member here. I've made a lot of phone calls to her and bugged her a lot, but thanks so much, and good luck at Sun Transit.
All right. Councilmember Copeng?
Not to belabor the Fourth of July, but it was quite a great event. I think, you know, the two events that really stood out were the North, the North Lake Parade, which has been going on for 60 years, as previously mentioned. But the Red, White, and Blues Festival, I think is just a great, a great example of, of the diversity of our community, just seeing people from every race, every economic strata, different abilities, just there, enjoying a great park, great, a great, I mean, great entertainment. And just, I think it really is just a, just a great picture of, of what our city really has become and what it can continue to be. And that was just, just very encouraging for me as a member of the council, to be able to see that again, and just realize that this is not something that, that, and this is something that happens year after year here in Fedaway. I also had the pleasure of serving a jury duty this week, and I think I was at the Kent Superior Court. It's one of those things that, I think we kind of look at that as saying, my, that's something that, it's kind of boring. It's one of those things that, man alive, you just kind of think about how much you sit, and really nothing happens, but what a vital part of our, of our, of our government, and that we as citizens can rely on fellow citizens to be members of a jury and, and give us the, the opportunity for a trial among our peers. And again, it's just one more thing that we're almost, we're compelled to do as citizens, but again, it's a great, I think it's really a great honor, and I think a privilege for us as, as citizens of this, certainly of this county, but of this, as a country, to be able to participate in the legal system that way. And again, I just am enjoying it from that standpoint very much. So that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Of course, we all, how do I start this? Yesterday was an amazing day, and I do want to briefly talk about the Fourth of July. It's, it's, as I've said to many people, it's the one time that I truly love, it's the one time where I love the fact that we all come together as one community, as one Fedaway. Yesterday I had the opportunity to really just make keen observations, and I just loved seeing people laughing, smiling, people relaxing, and just reconnecting. And that was just very empowering, and it just reminded me about why I'm doing what I'm doing. And it's just, it's just a fantastic time. I met a woman by the name of Allison, I think we've all, might have met her. She came and spoke to, to the council a few times, and she shared how great of, how great the city was in terms of disabilities and opportunities. She talked about how great the school district is, that has provided so much for her child who has disabilities, and it just continued to reinforce how great our city is and how, how we're working really hard, along with all jurisdictions, to do what we can to make the city the best city in the state of Washington. I also had a, I also had an opportunity to meet my former students. As many of you guys will know, I was an AmeriCorps member, serving at, with the Fedaway School District at Lakota Middle School. And it's my favorite time because it's the one time where you get to see your old students come back. And it was just great because I got to meet my former student by the name of Peyton. She's, wants to be, she wants to work in the FBI industry, career, and I connected her with the chief of police that kind of gave her an insight. So I appreciate you doing that, Chief Juan. Thank you. And it's just, just so many exciting things are happening. Of course, with the, with our parks, with all the development, economic development, and more importantly, the Performing Arts and Event Center, how we're beginning to be a city of opportunity, and that's exciting. Moving forward, just today, we had a chance, and I'm proud to have supported our candidates for the diversity commission, but we sat down with three of the four commissioners, talking about what can we do better as a city with our diversity aspects. And I was just really amazed and just really enjoyed the depth conversations that we got when we were interviewing our candidates, and just listening to them, of all the fresh ideas they, they have to bring to the table to continue to make our city the best. And I also do want to continue talking about Lake Jean. And I'm glad to hear, and I know that Mayor Farrell has worked hard on this issue from the past, and, and I appreciate what, what you've stated today, Mayor Farrell. And, and the reality is, is that this needs to be addressed. I think this issue's been on the table for long before I got involved, I think, you know, in terms of city politics. And so I urge my colleagues to take the tour and to see it, because it is disgusting, and it's wrong, flat-out wrong, to have one lake that's clean and another lake that's, that's on its way of being toxic once again. And the trend is, has gone in that favor of being toxic. And so I'm willing to make the bet that it's gonna happen again. I know there are lawsuits that are going on right now, but I think that because we have nothing to do with that, if I understand it correctly, I believe that we can take a step forward and look and study the feasibility of an ordinance, so that we can protect our residents. There, you know, we talk about equity, there's an issue with equity with our neighbors, and so we need to step up as a city and look at ways of addressing that, and I think there are answers. And so therefore, I wanted, I do want to thank, again, thank the mayor for taking a refreshed look at this. But I also want to thank my colleague and the chairman of the Public Safety Committee. I know that this is gonna be added to the agenda. We're gonna look at this, we're gonna study this, and I'm looking forward to getting responses, because it's wrong. And on the last note, on a different, slightly different note, I would like to state that August 9th, I will not be in attendance to our council meeting, because I'll be on a honeymoon. So 30 days and counting, I'm gonna be a married man. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You better bring a note.
All right, Councilmember DuCleau?
Thank you. I just want to say the mayor and I had a joint lunch meeting, and the chief of staff also joined us with the Chamber of Commerce. And I thought it was a very nice meeting. It was away from either one of our offices, it was out at a restaurant, and we just got down and a chance to sit down and talk about how we can work together to improve, to improve the relationship between the chamber and the city, which is good relationships, but, but we can actually strengthen it by even doing more, because they can become a partner with us, especially in the area of economic development. And they can be working with Tim to help him in his job, because I know that's, that's more than a one-person job. And I think we came a lot closer, and I think any, any slight irritations we might have had, I think were all resolved, and I, I left feeling very, very good about that. And, and I think the mayor, and I think the, I think Becca from the chamber did, too. So I'm looking forward to having that strong relationship that we've always had with the chamber and, and working together on economic development and other things. I also want to thank our finance director for taking the brainstorming session that the council had with all these high priorities for the budget, and putting them in a semblance of order under certain categories. That was something that we need, that we needed to do in order to be able to move that forward. He did it for us. He, he did his draft of it for us, and we'll be able to have, have a look at that. We saw it at FedRAC, and I really, really appreciate him, appreciated him for taking the time to do that. I want to wish our city attorney all the best in her new position, but you know, I'm gonna miss you, because you're the first city attorney that explained things so I could understand them. So I want to be on the interview committee for the next one that's coming. We will really miss you. You've been, you've been wonderful for us. And finally, for the Fourth of July, I spent the evening trying to keep my dog assured that those bombs were not gonna blow up our house, and that he could come out from under the bed and he would be okay. And with that, I will say, end of report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DuCleau, and thank you for your assistance with the chamber luncheon. It was, it was very helpful. And your prior roles, the, as the president of the chamber, I think was very helpful as well. So thank you very much. All right, Deputy Mayor Burbidge?
Thank you very much. The next meeting of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee will be a week from tomorrow at 8:00 in the morning. And I'd also like to mention a couple of things coming up. The Symphony Garden Show is Saturday, July 16th, at 10:00 in the morning at Twin Lakes Golf and Country Club. And this should be a very enjoyable event for all of those who like flowers, like gardening. There's going to be information presented on container gardening and landscaping as well. And there's more information on the Twin Lakes, or excuse me, the Symphony's website. Additionally, I wanted to mention the, the parades. The North Lake Parade has been mentioned a great deal, and I remember it fondly. We lived over in that neighborhood for six years prior to moving to where we are now. And it gives me great pleasure, partly because our next-door neighbors and we, the Cordovas and the Burbages, discovered that there had been a parade there historically, and we decided that we needed to have a parade again at North Lake and helped to rejuvenate that parade. So it gives me great pleasure to see it continuing. And as a result of our being involved with that, when we moved to our current neighborhood, which was more than 35 years ago, our middle child, our second daughter, decided that we needed to have a parade there. And she took the initiative to design a poster, and we saw that it got copied, and she delivered it to the neighborhood. So, and that parade continues, and I was one of the observers of that parade yesterday. Unfortunately, my husband wasn't there because he was at a class reunion in North Dakota. But it was great fun to see the kids with their decorated bikes and, and the dogs and everybody else who enjoyed actually talking to each other, and instead of simply waving as we drive by. And Amy Jo, you are going to be missed, and you've brought a high level of quality in your work and in your personality. So, thank you so much. Come and visit.
Councilmember DuCleau?
Yeah, I just want to add one thing, because you're breaking my record. The one time I ran the city council meeting, I ended at 8:10, and you're doing it, it looks like 8:05, 8:06?
Now you're engaged in filibuster. Don't think I haven't had my, my eye on the clock.
I actually brought the dictionary with me.
No, I'm letting you out of here.
Well, before I adjourn, Amy Jo, thank you so much for your clear, cogent, and careful manner. You've been a true friend to everybody up in this dais in the City of Fedaway. On behalf of everybody here, we say thank you. And with that, we are adjourned.